All right. I'd like to open the Minnowville Planning Commission meeting for December 21st, 2022. If we could stand for pledge and allegiance, followed by a quick moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Sheriff, if you could do roll call, please.
Mr. Pecusa?
Here.
Ms. Kirda?
Here.
Mr. Walker?
Here.
Mr. Montgomery?
Here.
Ms. Lawrence? Mr. Massong?
Here.
Mr. Bretoni?
Here.
Mr. Welton?
Here.
Thank you. The first item on the agenda is the approval of minutes from our regular meeting in November last month. Those minutes, I believe, were-
I moved them.
Moved to-
Approved the minutes.
Kim approved, second by Bruce. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And I will abstain since I was not at that meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Under new business two items, 22-5-C and 22-6-C Bowser Genesis, the applicant had requested tabling, so I will seek a motion to approve that table.
So moved.
So moved, and do I-
Second.
Second? Bruce, second?
Bruce?
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? None. Thank you. And then our second item is our zoning ordinance work session. We have a presentation by Strategic Solutions. Guys, feel free, step up. You signed in and say your name again, please, just for record, and-
Sure.
It's yours.
Thank you. John Tran with Strategic Solutions. This is Matt Pernelli with me as well. We're here tonight for the fourth time with the Planning Commission to continue the work on the zoning ordinance. In front of you, you have several documents. You have the schedule that we've been working from and distributed at our first meeting back in August. You have an agenda for tonight's meeting. You have a copy of the most recent version, bound copy of the most recent version of the draft ordinance. And last time, you'll recall, the municipality's been working through updating the GIS, and that involved getting access to proposed zoning map changes. And so we had a markup last time that we talked to. The map in front of you now is a digital version of the proposed new zoning map that has a couple of changes on it. And again, this process has been going on now since May. Our first meeting with you, the Planning Commission members, was in August, so a few months ago. And we've been working through this, as I said, the first meeting, we broke apart the document, the draft document, that the municipality's been working on for quite some time, working with Paul and with the Planning Commission to review that document and bring it all back together. So this bound document that you see in front of you is the result of that process that brings it all back together now into one cohesive draft document to move through the formal review and adoption process. On your agenda tonight, we want to talk about several items and anything else the Planning Commission has questions about. That includes the medical overlay district, some of the specific uses that you all had asked about or that we wanted to highlight for you tonight, including education institution, condominiums, drive-ins, et cetera, as well as short-term rentals. We had a discussion about those at the last meeting. And then our next steps will be for the Planning Commission to consider tonight advancing this to the next step, which would be a recommendation to council for adoption of the new ordinance. And council would review the draft, as you see it here, with any amendments from discussion with the Planning Commission tonight incorporated at their January 10th meeting next year, 2023. Any questions on the overall process or schedule before we dive into some of the details? Okay. And just like last time, last several meetings, we've been working on this with Paul, so we're gonna walk through some items. Matt's gonna walk through a PowerPoint presentation. Might get a quick glimpse of my kids there. I apologize. Well, I don't apologize. They're cute.
We'll agree.
Thank you. And Paul and I, we got three of us may jump in and provide some additional input and insight to answer any of your questions.
Sure.
Okay.
Evening, everyone.
Hi.
Hi.
Give the TV crew a minute to get your presentation up on the monitor. There you go.
All right. So like John planned out, the zoning map updates, again, just going over what we've discussed in the past. I wanted to highlight what it actually looks like now that you have a full draft in front of you. So new zoning districts, the Boulevard District, which is that mixed-use district, and its main purpose is to provide a nice mix of residential and commercial uses. It's also gonna permit apartments on the second floor or above commercial structures. So if you look at the bottom of the slide, some permitted uses by right, bars, service businesses, drive-through restaurants, financial institutions, fitness centers, personal care centers, restaurants, and schools. And then the multifamily residential conditional uses, apartments, condominiums, garden apartments, townhouses, and two-family homes. The landfill district, again, this is just for public and private municipal management uses. The medical district overlay, promote medical campus setting by creating specific development standards for hospitals and medical uses within the district boundaries. So some of the uses that we wanted to promote here, healthcare, retail, and commercial offices, combined with residential dwellings within a campus-lake setting. So again, the permitted uses, hospitals, outpatient clinics, continuing care facilities, urgent care facilities, child and adult care uses, nursing homes, group homes, healthcare-related retail, so that's like your pharmacies, general retail, and then multifamily housing. The multifamily housing is something that we brought up in the last meeting, and we want to make sure we promote residential uses where the people will be working.
As Matt's going through some of these uses, it might be helpful for you to turn to page 87 in the draft document. That's the use chart, and Matt's gonna highlight the use chart, but I know as Matt's reading off some uses, it might be helpful to see where those uses are permitted in relationship to all the zoning districts. So in beginning of page 87, that's a chart that represents every proposed permitted use in the municipality. And then running across the top is the zoning district where it's permitted, and Matt will walk you through that.
Yeah, so the, just the key, R is permitted by right, which is the right for the use there. Conditional use, regulations will be found in sections 503 and 504. 503 is the general standards for all the conditional uses. 504 begins the specific regulations for each use. Special exceptions, regulations can be found in section 1211. And again, it's like the conditional uses, each use has their own regulations, and would be not permitted in that zoning district. So this is a good slide, putting it all together. I'm using garden apartment use as an example. So there you have the definition of garden apartment. And then that picture there shows you what it looks like in the use chart, where it's allowed, where it's not allowed. So in this specific example, it's permitted by right in R3 and R4 residential zoning districts, and then a conditional use in C3 in the Boulevard District. And then so you go and find the regulations in the conditional use regulation section 504, subsection DD, and there you have your conditional use regulations. Going back to the zoning map, this, it gives you an idea of what the old or the current zoning map looks like, and then the proposed changes to it. So you can see a lot of that C3 commercial district is now being replaced by the Boulevard District, that mixed-use district. The landfill district was what was the S1 special conservancy and L special use district. Also on the map you guys have, everything that's hatched is where zoning district changes have, are being proposed. If you guys can see that.
Yeah.
Something else we worked on over the last couple of months is developing a more robust floodplain overlay district. There you can see the purpose. It's required by the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. So it includes some general and technical provisions for the district. It also includes permitted uses that are special to that overlay district, much like the medical overlay district. So there you can see agricultural recreational uses that don't require structures, wildlife, conservation, residential yards only, again, no structures, and then public utilities. Basically, they're just trying to protect the flood zone as well as protect any uses that would be in the flood zone. Some prohibited uses, again, all structures that would divert or alter the flow of water. And there's also stricter variance regulations, so making sure that structures that shouldn't be there aren't there.
And with the floodplain district, we worked with Paul and the municipal engineer to incorporate the floodplain ordinance that was already in the works to incorporate that into this overall master zoning ordinance document. So now that's been fully incorporated and updated in the draft that you have in front of you.
So this section goes over how we address the hot topics that were brought up in previous PowerPoints that presented, that we presented. So crematorium, it's a permitted use by right in the M1 and M2 districts. It's found in section 804 of your guys' handouts there. Again, these are the regulations for it. The one thing I wanted to point out here is there's actually emission standards. Table 801.
When we get them into the document.
If you turn to-
It's on page 264.
264.
You already were in the document. Awesome.
No.
Okay, so yeah, if you go, you don't have to go back, but I have two pages open. One, I just wanted to point out to you that, as Matt mentioned, every single conditional use, you're thinking about the different parts of the ordinance. The use chart identifies every use and in what zoning districts it's permitted and how. And for every use that's permitted as a conditional use, the ordinance must have specific criteria identified. So you look at the use chart, it tells you a certain use is permitted as a conditional use. And then you go to page 132, section 504 begins those specific standards and criteria for conditional uses. And as you flip through there, you'll see that there's lots and lots of uses and regulations for each of those uses that are listed in the use chart as conditional uses. And then Matt was beginning to talk about, or he already did talk about crematory on page, section 804, which is on page 264. And this is in the supplemental regulations section, which begins on page 263.
Tiny home, section 504, so the conditional use section. It's a conditional use in the R3 residential and M1 districts. The regulated similarly to mobile home just simply means it's allowed in the same districts that the mobile home would be allowed in. Some pretty standard regulations there. Any questions with those rigs?
As you're looking for the uses, you know, as you review the draft, those conditional uses are organized alphabetically. So section 504, all those conditional uses are organized alphabetically, and tiny homes is T, so somewhere towards the back. What section is it? What is it?
Quad A.
Yeah, it's Quad A, which, that's the oil gas. Four As.
Four As.
Quad As.
Sorry.
I'm close. Yeah. 223.
223?
223. AAAA. So we're still on section 504, the conditional use regulations. Tiny homes permitted per the use chart as a conditional use. And on page 223, section AAAA is tiny homes. So again, we're just walking you through some examples to show how the ordinance pieces have all, you know, come together.
And in that case, you said that it's only where there's current mobile home?
It's in the districts, the zoning districts where mobile homes are permitted.
We'll get to your questions, sir, once they're complete with their presentation. Thanks.
Thank you.
So the bed and breakfast, we talked at length about in previous sessions. Again, just pointing out where it's at in the document and what, and where it's allowed. So R3, R4, C3, and then that new Boulevard District. Again, the big thing with the bed and breakfast is it needs to be in a house that is clear that it's a secondary use and that the owner lives in that house as well, and that it can't, a guest can't be accommodated for longer than seven days. In compared, go ahead, John. In comparison with the short-term rental, which is allowed in the same districts, but it's a completely different use, as we talked about. And these are the regulations. One thing with the short-term rentals is we are gonna require a permit, and these outline the requirements for that permit.
So let's get to, why don't we turn to the short-term rentals?
Say, was length of stay determined on a short-term rental?
It's in the definition.
It's in the definition. It's less than 30 days.
Okay.
A rental unit, less than 30 days.
Yeah, the definition section, we talked, I think, two meetings ago about the importance of definitions. You'll note the definition section is quite lengthy. There are lots of words defined, and that's important to make sure there's no ambiguity in the uses and the terms that are used. So as Matt said, short-term rental is defined, and it's on page 55. A residential dwelling unit that is rented wholly or partially for a fee for a period of less than 30 continuous days and does not include hotel or a bed and breakfast establishment or a bed and breakfast home stay.
Hobby farm. Last time, it was brought up that we needed to include a minimum lot area for a hobby farm. That's now in there. Section two of the hobby farm section. The minimum lot area of a hobby farm is five acres. That's something that we agreed upon in the previous session. Another thing we worked on was planned residential developments. We updated design standards substantially. So these are all the things required. Just some highlights here, the minimum site of a planned residential development has to be five acres. Minimum site frontage is 200 feet, minimum building separation is 20 feet, maximum height of a building is 35 feet, and then some other things are, have their own regulations. These are just the section headlines. And John already has discussed the next steps.
Yes, if you want to look at the schedule, we can go through in detail where we go from here. You'll see that on the left-hand column on the schedule, the items that are completed are marked with an X. So we're here tonight at the December 21st Planning Commission meeting. From here, if the Planning Commission were to recommend the ordinance to move forward to council, on the 22nd, the final draft document goes out to the county for review, council to begin their review process, as well as through the municipal solicitor and engineer. As I mentioned earlier, on January 10th, the municipal council at their meeting will review highlights of the ordinance, answer any questions, and authorize advertisement for a public hearing. The municipality's planning code requires that the municipality hold a public hearing. All the notice requirements are included there. You'll also see posting requirements for a hearing notice. As we discussed last meeting, we reviewed that markup of the proposed zoning map changes. Whenever there's a zoning map change, there are additional notice requirements, including postings. So those are incorporated into this overall schedule now as well. Then municipal council would hold the public hearing on February 14th and consider the ordinance for adoption at their March 14th meeting.
So we wanted to work with you tonight on a few uses that during this recent update we came across. One use in particular is the education institution. It's allowed, the way the current ordinance was written, it regulated it by seeing school and seeing vocational schools. The issue there is, when you looked at the use chart, the uses didn't match for those regulations. So it was very confusing. So it was our recommendation to remove educational institution. But after talking with Paul and discussing it, we're gonna keep it and make sure that we align those uses to make it more cohesive and better to understand. Condominiums, again, similar issue here with those. They, um, they were allowed as a conditional use but didn't have regulations, right, Paul? Is that the issue we had there with those?
I don't remember.
I'll have to look at the use chart.
Yeah, your email referenced that it's listed as a use by right, but it has provisions in the conditional use regulations section.
Yeah, so that's, that was the issue. It was used by right, which shouldn't have any additional regulations, but it had conditional use regulations. So do we want to keep that as a conditional use or a use by right?
The condominium.
The condominium.
If there's requirements, yeah. I mean, so the question is, do, why don't we turn to those requirements? What section is that? Be in the, section 504. It's a C, so it's gonna be early in the process, early in the list, I guess. So it's condominium-
We have to hold all questions till they're done, please. You'll have a chance, I promise.
I'm getting close. Okay, 504, section 504, it's letter P, which is page 169. So again, using this as an example, if we would keep in the use, or change in the use chart that condominiums would be permitted as a conditional use, these were the conditions that would apply. And there's 1 through 8 there, including an impact fee study, parking space location requirements, spacing between buildings, vehicular entrance, emergency access, screening of mechanical equipment, screening of parking next to single family, and waste collection requirements. And these requirements and the definitions for town, apartment buildings, for example, apartments, are very similar to condominiums, and that's where the overlap is. Paul's suggestion, it's a good one, is to be uber-specific, just so there's no confusion, and include both of those uses and regulate them similarly so that there's no confusion about what use is being proposed. I'll go to the next one.
Drive-in theater, we're just not sure where to include this use.
Yeah, so that's some feedback we want from the Planning Commission. I mean, everybody knows what a drive-in is, but if you look at the definition section, it's defined at the bottom of page 23. "A form of cinema structure consisting of a large outdoor movie screen, a projection booth, a concession stand, and a large parking area for automobiles. Within this enclosed area, customers can view movies from the privacy and comfort of their cars." So the question would be, is, you know, this was not previously defined to be permitted in a zoning district, and if anybody has some thoughts on where it could be allowed, or you'd prefer it to be allowed, obviously not in a residential district, but if there is a district, when you look at the proposed zoning map that you think would be amenable to the drive-through theater land use? If anybody has any suggestions, or if Paul, you have a-
This sort of came about as a leftover from years past. Minnowville used to have drive-in theaters, so it was in the previous use chart. I don't know, we might be able to just completely eliminate it. I don't know that we're ever gonna get another drive-in theater. I would, I just put essentially a placeholder in the, in the use chart in case, you know, somebody thought maybe it would pertain. But we could potentially just eliminate it, or we could regulate it to, you know, a conservancy area or one of the business areas. It was just, it's just an option floating out there.
We have to allow for all uses somewhere, so I think we pick a district where other commercial uses are already located?
Yeah, I guess, would there be any similar other uses there? Something in the C1 or C2 that would be even remotely similar that would-
Something, I mean, you know, something that has a large parking lot. I mean, somewhere over by the mall would probably work. You know, one of the C2 districts or the Boulevard District, something like that. And then we would have that use covered. I don't know that it's ever gonna appear. I don't know that we're ever gonna see a drive-in theater come back, but-
Right.
Never know.
So looking at the proposed zoning map, the C2 is the, I suppose that's purple, sort of mauve? I don't know.
Yeah. The- Magenta.
Yeah, magenta. The middle purple color, I guess it is. So is everybody comfortable with putting drive-ins in that location? We have to put them somewhere.
I mean, we could put it in C2, C3, and Boulevard. I mean, that kind of expands it a little bit.
Okay.
And then that would be the pink, pink, purple, and red areas on the map.
Okay. Last one.
Medical marijuana dispensary and grower producer. These need districts as well.
So let's look at the definition. So if we go into the definition section, we go to M. "Medical marijuana grower processor facility and medical marijuana dispensary" are towards the bottom of page 38. When the Commonwealth passed legislation to allow for distribution of medical marijuana, that legislation included definitions. These definitions and uses mirror the state legislation, so that there's consistency there. And there are regulations in section 504. We wanna go to the use chart first?
It doesn't matter.
So if you go to the use chart on page, so keep, page 38, keep your one, a pinky there while you turn the page or put a paper clip. Those are the definitions, the two uses. The medical marijuana grower processor is where the growing and processing occurs. The medical marijuana dispensary is essentially a retail establishment selling the end product. So those two uses need to be incorporated on the use chart, which begins on page 88. And medical marijuana placeholder-
On 90.
Is on 90. So we've got currently as proposal for the dispensary to be a conditional use in C1, C2, C3, and the growing facility to be a conditional use in the L, M1, M2, and CU. And then if we go further back to, let's find, medical marijuana in the-
Well, we pause on the dispensary for a minute. I agree, and I don't know, Planning Commission, what you guys say. I agree, the C1, 2, and 3 districts. I don't know, should we also include Boulevard as part of that, being that the current location in front of the malls would be in that location?
Yes.
I agree.
That was for the dispensary.
The dispensary, correct.
Put it in the Boulevard.
Can I ask something on this one, or not yet?
Yeah.
For the medical marijuana dispensary and grow, if the Commonwealth law changes, does this zoning get updated? Like, how do we deal with that if the-
It would depend how the state changes their regulations, yeah.
All right, and then it would just get adjusted?
Yep, it'd be an amendment.
So add the dispensary to the Boulevard. And then the last piece, we've got the definitions, the use chart, and the last piece is the conditions, because they're only, both of those uses are only permitted as conditional uses. So on page one eighty-two, section Q-Q and R-R, for the medical marijuana dispensary, there are seven requirements for the conditional use. And then the R-R for the medical marijuana growing facility, there are twelve requirements. For the medical marijuana dispensary, it includes things like a traffic study, requiring road frontage, licensing by the state, waste collection, screening of mechanical equipment, distance requirements, so separation from existing schools, playgrounds, public park, daycare, nursery, or place of worship, as well as parking requirements. For the medical marijuana growing facility, I'm not going to read through all twelve there, but there are security requirements, location requirements, screening requirements, and a general requirement to comply with all state and federal regulations. Other than the change to add the dispensary in the Boulevard, any questions or comments about those two uses and where they're permitted? And how they're regulated? Okay. So that was everything that we wanted to highlight. Is there anything in particular that the planning commission wanted to discuss or ask about in terms of this draft before it moves on to the next step?
Yeah.
Yeah, so in regards to tiny homes, I'm not sure. I was looking through where, if someone were to put something in their, on their property, a small structure that was, you know, for like in-law or whatever, is that considered tiny home in this ordinance?
We have a separate provision in here for accessory.
Like an in-law, like a unit?
Mother-in-law suite.
Another, but it's a separate unit, but it would not be in the tiny home category?
Correct.
Okay.
It would be like an accessory use.
Accessory use.
Primary structure.
Accessory dwelling.
Accessory dwelling, got it.
Well, do we have any tiny homes?
Not that we're aware of.
Okay.
But you might. There would be an accessory dwelling, possibly.
Well, no, tiny home, we did have somebody that was interested in creating like a tiny home community.
Yeah.
And it looked like a lot of problems. So that's one of the reasons it made it into the proposed zoning ordinance.
I got you.
I'd like to backtrack a little bit. When you mentioned the process, before it goes to council, it goes to county?
For review, yes.
For review, okay. So you're basing it on it being returned immediately. But say they, they have recommendations. Do we, are we provided with recommendations that they are, say they want to change some language in here or they don't, it doesn't fit their criteria? Will we be notified so that we can review it?
Yeah, the municipality's planning code requires that Monroeville send any proposed new zoning ordinance or amendment for the county's review. There's no requirement that you wait for their review. So as you said, you may get a return immediately, they may never respond. Some counties never respond, Allegheny County does. There's no requirement that you wait for their response, but Allegheny County will, I'm sure, respond.
They're not required to respond when we send them something?
They are not. But when you get that response, I'm sure you will get one, and I'm sure Paul will forward it to you in council to consider. It's likely you'll have that before the public hearing in February.
Yes, we will respond to their comments.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Any other questions for planning right now? If not, I know we have some public that would like to speak or have questions or comments. So I will give the floor to you guys if you could come on up.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. If you could please state your name for the record, and you are a resident of Monroeville, is that correct?
My name is David Mintz, and I've been a resident of Monroeville for almost fifty years. So yes. And I am here tonight in the spirit of public service, as is everybody on the planning commission, I'm sure, and almost everybody in the room today, I'm sure. And I have some comments and requests and a reason why I'm making these requests. Tonight's meeting was listed, a legal notice was listed for this meeting as a chance for Monroeville residents to, this was a chance for, to hear public comment for the adoption of amendments to the municipality zoning ordinance. So this is a public hearing and for comments, as I'm doing and others will right now. My request would be that the planning commission not make a recommendation to the Monroeville governing body, the Monroeville Council, one way or another, until the public gets a chance to actually have a copy of the draft ordinance, the amendment to the ordinance. That's what I was trying to ask you, just so that while our presenters were speaking tonight, that somebody from the public, myself or anybody else, could be following along or read it. Nobody has had a chance to do that from the public. So this meeting tonight that is listed as a public comment, it puts us at a disadvantage of making comment other than what we could hear, right? We don't have it, we couldn't read it, I couldn't study it, I couldn't come here. So to call it a public comment, it's a very limited chance for public comment if we can't read it or study it at all. So I would say that any kind of recommendation at this point would be premature, considering the public hasn't had a chance to review this at all, really. So my request for that, based on that, and I can give you a reason that I am, speaking of public service, you know, and I wanted to mention this, and everybody in this room has something in common with, I just wanted to mention, in our community today, Frank O'Harris passed away, as we all know, and he, I got a chance to meet him in the, also in the spirit of community service. He was just an amazing person in that, and I just want to pass along my condolences, not only as, you know, a hero as a football player, but as, the last forty or fifty years, as his service to our community that we're all doing here tonight. So I just, I wanted to mention that, really. But as a member, a longtime member of several organizations for public service, one being Sustainable Monroeville, which many people I'm sure have heard about, and also a board member of a public welfare organization called Protect PT, which stands up for the welfare of all the citizens of Allegheny and West Maryland County, as well as the people across the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. I have worked with the Monroeville Council for years, along with others, to try to update our ordinance in the sense of oil and gas specifically. And I can tell you that Monroeville Council, as a result of some of the work that, some of the organizations that I just mentioned did, along with Food and Water Watch, another public service organization, Monroeville Council voted several years ago to change our usage table so that oil and gas development couldn't be just even a conditional use in all the zoning districts of Monroeville, but just in M-two industrial. And that was voted by the council, that was put on our condition, on our usage table, and that is the case as it is today. Even though I haven't had a chance to review the draft that you have, I am aware of one aspect is that in the proposed amendment to the ordinance by Strategic Solutions, the oil and gas development section now has, in the proposed amendment, conditional use not only in M-two industrial, but also in the new zoning district of landfill and in S-conservancy, which, if you look at the map, that's been up here several times and that you all have, that we don't, that's every green space of Monroeville. S-conservancy is every park, every conservation area, it's every green space of Monroeville. So those are being proposed really in direct contradiction to what Monroeville Council several years ago already voted to prevent, to only keep this kind of development in M-two industrial. So that kind of information, which I am privileged to know, but most people wouldn't be, as well as anything else in this draft that we didn't get a chance to hear in this meeting today, and of course, couldn't study ahead of time to comment on, is a reason why not only do we need a copy of the draft as the public, but that until that's done, I would hope that the planning commission would not make a recommendation in any way to the Monroeville governing body, which is the council. And can I ask, even on that specific, so if you have that draft, if anybody can look at that usage table right now, if you go to the oil and gas section of the usage table, I don't know what page it is because I don't have that. And you can see what I was just saying, because I want to stress this. If you go to the oil and gas section and go straight across the chart...
Yeah, it's on page ninety again, planning, it's, yeah, it's listed on here, proposed.
Right.
Listed as conditional uses on M-two, S, and landfill.
Right, and landfill, being a new zoning district, as well as S-conservancy, which is not new, are completely in opposition to what the Monroeville Council already voted on. So I would hope that the planning commission would look at this very seriously and make strong recommendation to change that or take that out, to at least maintain the status quo that was achieved by the Monroeville Council, let alone the fact that several times over the last couple of years, I personally have introduced updated amendments to the oil and gas ordinance that many people have worked on, and we did this gratis, you know, free, no charge whatsoever. And my understanding is that according to our municipal manager, his office would not review it until somebody on Monroeville Council championed it, and nobody has done that so far. So to sum it up, my point is, is that tonight I'm asking that we at least maintain the status quo of keeping the oil and gas development in M-two industrial, and then for the planning commission to accept amendments to our oil and gas ordinance that we have worked on that would help protect the citizens of Monroeville, including with setback adjustments that would be more protective of the people, and we have scientific studies showing this, as well as compressor stations and injection wells. And let me just point this out, injection wells, which may or may not be in your draft, I don't know, because I don't have it. Injection wells are already in Plum, our neighboring community. There's one that's active right now and another one that is proposed, and it's about to be active if it's not stopped. And Plum Council is now appealing a ruling that was going to allow this second injection well. Monroeville could be just as susceptible to injection wells, and if you don't know what that is, that's taking all the waste materials from fracking operations and pumping them into the ground in old conventional gas wells that we have all across Monroeville, but that were not designed for this purpose. And they've already had leakage in their first one. I know that's a lot, but this is really important, and so I don't know if anybody has any comments on anything I said?
No, the only question I did is, are these proposed documents available to the public? Are they online somewhere or anything to this point, or was the process for that, if so?
We're not allowed to give them out yet.
Okay.
We were going to wait until after it was made public to council.
Okay.
Then we were going to make it a public document. And the reason being, just because there have been so many drafts and changes, we didn't want, you know, three different drafts, you know, multiple drafts out there.
You can see how, as the public, this was a public comment meeting, and it was advertised as a legal, you know, notice of that, how could we make comment? I mean, I've been involved with this for years, so I have a little bit of a head start to be able to make these comments, but how could most people of Monroeville make any comments on this if they don't have it?
Can we, can we address the same things during the public hearing? Like, the public hearing that comes before the final decision?
Absolutely.
Yeah, yes.
Yeah, I mean, that would be, and it would be available, at that point, it would be available to the public?
Correct.
For how, for how long?
Prior to that.
Yeah, prior, not just at the meeting.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It'll, yeah, you'll be able to submit a write-to-note and receive a copy.
That's the only way to get it? It won't be at the Monroeville library or online?
I mean, we could, we could probably do that, honestly, why not?
I mean, this is...
Put it on a website or something?
Pretty important, I mean, there's not so many people in Monroeville that are going to know how to do a write-to-note.
I think that's a reasonable request, if they could do it at that, prior, prior to the meeting.
We could have put on, like you said, the website for download or something. We just have to be cautious, like you said, Paul, that it's marked or noted that it's, you know, not a final version.
That's a draft.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, and just so you know, I received this yesterday afternoon. So it's fairly new to me, even though I've been working on it for over a year. I just received this draft yesterday.
Right, and so, you know, that would be another reason, I think, you know, I might be speaking for some of the people here tonight, that to not rush this. I mean, the schedule, the proposed schedule that I'm hearing seems like you guys make a recommendation to Monroeville Council, February fourteenth, they let the public, you know, make comment if they've had a chance to read it, hopefully they will, like you're saying, and then in March, vote on it. That's boom, 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 boom. How's that going to happen that fast? That seems ridiculously...
That's just a tentative schedule.
Yeah, right. I understand, that just seems like, whoa, way too fast. But can anybody even comment on the part I said about the conditional use of the oil and gases? Just the fact that this already has been voted on by the governing body to not have it the way it looks there, that seems to be a precedent, which would, you know, be like a, you know, if you look at a, you know, precedent in law, it is a precedent, it's a law, an ordinance that was voted on by Monroeville already, and to just have it changed by like a consulting firm, it seems like the planning commission should look at what Monroeville Council already voted into law and say, well, there's no, there's no good reason to be changing this.
So it's my understanding, and anybody correct me if I'm wrong, when it was currently listed as conditional use in the M-two district, and then we have the setback requirements at, what, twelve-hundred feet, I think it was?
Well, as far as I know, Monroeville only has the five-hundred-foot Pennsylvania rule, but...
In the proposed one.
I'm sorry, in the proposed one, it's changed to twelve-hundred feet.
Okay, well, that's, that's good news.
Because of that change in that setback requirement, those M-two zoning districts are too narrow in most areas to be able to fit the twelve-hundred-foot setback onto those properties.
Yeah, I, okay, so I understand what you're saying, but then, okay. I understand what you're saying, because you don't want to make it exclusionary, that's the point, right? You're worried about being sued in court. But to open it up to all S-conservancy in Monroeville, now look, I mean, you look at that map, every park in Monroeville would be open to this.
Again, it's not finalized for that version yet, but that's the reasoning why it changed from the M-two to the other districts, at least being proposed, you know? That's all I can think of.
It seems like something we have to work on, because that would be like a, basically any, the whole municipality of Monroeville would be open to this, in every green space, in every park, the landfill. I mean, so this adjustment, maybe we shouldn't let that happen. So we have to take a look at the setback and not give up our green spaces to potential industrial development, because that is an industrial process, the hydraulic fracturing. So we really have to look at that. I think that's for the protection of everybody in the, in the community, as well as neighboring communities. Because you have the compressing stations, you have the pipeline, connecting pipelines, you have all of that that's going to affect a lot of people, so...
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mintz.
Sure, thank you.
Any other comments, public?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Hello, if you could, please state your name and sign in.
Sure, I'm Lois Drumheller. I live in Monroeville since nineteen ninety-eight. Much has been explained in a very thorough way by Mr. David Mintz. He and I were members of Sustainable Monroeville, and we are also board members of an organization that he mentioned, Protect PT. When we were involved with regular meetings here in twenty seventeen and eighteen, Sustainable Monroeville even took a look at a proposed zoning amendment, oil and gas zoning ordinance. And we made suggestions, we gave a ten-page explanation primer to not only all members of Monroeville Council, but all members of the planning commission and the zoning hearing officer. The due process that I have seen and been made aware of is the same. I got notice of the public hearing, although if you look at your agenda, I was a little confused, because it just said "presentation by Strategic Solutions regarding revisions to the zoning ordinance." So I'm glad we're having this discussion, this public hearing. The public being involved in the process and considering any kind of input to any kind of changes, and I don't really have to get into the municipal planning code in front of me here, I think that everybody is aware that in the process of doing this, there are, it's very necessary, and it's very redundant if you wait until you are at the stage where you've already determined, based on what you know, without public input, without public being able to see the process, at least the use table, the proposed zoning map, those two things don't get marked up as much as the language that you are marking up. But certainly some version of the language, as it pertains to every single component of the zoning ordinance, if you wait until you are at the council level where you are recommending, making recommendations on the entire thing, you've missed out on being able to go back and make any substantive changes that may have been overlooked by not having the public at this point, in front of this body, to take a look at it. In fact, I thought that when you, when council earlier this year, I think it was, approved, I think it was thirty-seven thousand dollars, something to have strategic... was $37,000, something, to have Strategic Solutions invited to overlook the ordinance, I was looking forward to having workshops with the public, because unless you go back and have a very expensive process where you have to re-advertise once it gets to the council level, because of things that you didn't include the public on in the Planning Commission stage, you've missed out on, on being able to look with that, and it gave us a disadvantage of not being able to work with the consultant that was brought in, those are the workshops that are, that are necessary by law, because the public has a right to know, it's not only the Sunshine Law, it's stated in the municipal planning code that we should be part of that process, how can you, as a body that's invited to make a public comment, do anything, when, the point is, when you give testimony, you didn't get to see what you were actually looking at, didn't get to see the use table, did not get to see the zoning map, the proposed zoning map, and when I was here the other day, trying to get caught up on this, I met with Mr. Weldon, and I had a chance to look over his shoulder, and when I saw that alphabetically on the use table, ah, under C, compressor stations were there, they must be doing something with an oil and gas ordinance, okay, and we, we continued to go down, and alphabetically, there was nothing I, so I thought, hmm, there's nothing on injection wells, if they're going to do something on oil and gas, we, we bring a lot of knowledge, not just the people before you, but the people in this community are a wealth of knowledge, they've used their taxpayer money to try to bring in a consultant, we need to be part of this process, and, and if I went down a little further in the alphabet and saw, oh, oil and gas operations, well, when I was back C, compressor station, I saw M2, heavy industrial zone, or not planned industrial zone, I think it's going to be reworded, and I thought, okay, that's appropriate, because back in 2018, due to the efforts of us talking to the municipal council, we did arrive at a solution, because they looked back and said, oh, wait a minute, we've got to take this out of every district, we have it as a conditional use to have oil and gas operations in every single district, that's inviting a lawsuit, so they quickly and wisely moved oil and gas operations to industrial, where they belong, and when I saw compressor station, there's where it was, I went down to oil and gas, and what did I see, and I looked over at the map, but something that was initially proposed by the solicitor, Mr. Bob Ratcher, who, if you, if you're not understanding the history, you know, people lawyer everywhere, but Mr. Ratcher has an extensive background, is, is being a lawyer for Apex Energy, one of the oil and gas giants that are around here with wells, so he should be an expert on what he was looking at there, and when it was, they made a proposal that they, they allow fracking on the landfill, it was something that we said, listen, we've got to talk, and fortunately, the result of that was, okay, we're going to pitch that ordinance, we're not even going to put it up for a vote, which I thought, well, all you had to do is really just remove it and put it into M2, but they decided not to do an ordinance at all in 2018, so we don't have any regulations telling us the how-to and all of the components, and when you see that, you, you have to ask yourself, okay, there's got to be some reason that it's here as a conditional use in the L, the C conservancy and L4, or is it just L?
Yeah, LF landfill.
LF, okay, landfill, I wouldn't have any idea what that is, and I, I have a lot of input, and it's not just me, so the least we could have had at the very beginning of your process were the proposed map and the use table, because that tells us a story about what's going on, and again, I'm going to say it again, you, you know, if you wait until you're at the stage of being in front of council, it's very difficult to introduce those substantive changes at that point, it costs you more money, it costs us more money to re-advertise and extend all of this, this, this is a learning process, this is probably a newer Planning Commission, and I'm grateful to see you here, but that learning process has to include the public, and if I could just say one more thing, you have an example of an outdoor theater, it's called the Community Park in the amphitheater, because on Sunday nights during the summer, it's quite traditional, instead of being in your cars, that the public is on their lawn chairs with their children in their jammies, getting ready for bed, seeing a Sunday night movie, it was great, and you also have unused property in that, what is that zoned, it's a municipal-owned land.
The big park?
The big park.
Conservancy.
Conservancy, yeah.
Yes, so conservancy, would be something you might want to consider for your, your outdoor theater, and don't discount that they will come back.
Never know.
Okay, there was something else that you had mentioned here, oh, I, I think I remember now, and that is the county's process, this is a due process, and I, I have five years' experience on Monroeville Council to back what I'm saying, because we dealt with this, you need to hear back from the county before you vote, that is something you need to do as a council manic function, you don't send it to the county for review without waiting to see what they say, because you may have had syntax or some type of grammatical error, or it was sloppily explained, and the county will let you know at that office, this is how you need to reword this, and you should not vote as a council until you have that state of knowing what the county says, that's just a due process, I think I've talked myself out, I appreciate your time, and I sincerely think that we have a chance to maybe realize what at least two people here have tried to say, are there any questions back to me, or maybe something that I may have said that you don't agree with?
No, the one comment I would make, and I, I know you know this, Mrs. Drumheller, these meetings are open to the public every month, this is the fourth or fifth time, I believe, that Strategic Solutions has been in front of us presenting, so the information has been out there, it might not have been readily available to you as the public in general, but if, if you're following along with the process and with the meetings, the information was out there and available to the public, it's not like it was, you're being excluded from that process.
Well, certainly not excluded from your meetings, because, thank goodness for you two, because you can go back and catch something, there was a hiccup in November's meeting, and you couldn't catch certain words that were coming out of your mouth when you were pointing out certain things, and I couldn't catch that right at the time that you were pointing to the landfill, and so that might have been a technical thing, yeah, that, you do have that.
That being said, I mean, you, you, it's completely understandable, Mr. Mintz, same thing, you know, you want these documents to be able to review publicly first.
Right, and, and seeing, because I have no idea what you have in that, this section that is for oil and gas, no eyes could, could I have on any of that, and in the meantime, I could have had eyes, anybody, taxpayers could have had eyes on the use table and the, and the proposed map, I would like to know, though, sir, where that directive for that not to be shared with the public came from.
I asked our human resources officer about that, and he said it is Section 708B9 in the.
On rural charter?
No, except that's provided in subsection C and D, the following are exempt from access by request under this act, drafts, resolutions, regulations, statement of policy, management directives, and there's a couple other things in there, but.
Are you quoting the Sunshine Act? It sounds like when you said 708, you might be referring to the right to know law? Yeah, probably.
I assume it's the right to know law.
Yeah, I think that's it.
Your request is denied in accordance with Section 708B9 of the Pennsylvania right to know law.
Well, I can tell you.
There's some, some exceptions in there about drafts.
As an entity, there's, there's been a right to know request, we're going to get it because we have a right to know request, why should we have to do that, because it's going to be an automatic 30-day delay, I will guarantee you that, from, from your open records officer here, okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other members of the public wishing to speak? All right, seeing non-council, or planning members, any other questions, comments, anything for Strategic Solutions? Based on some of the comments, I am willing to entertain a motion to table this, just so the public has a chance to review the documents, be able to come back next month, any other questions or concerns, and then look at it again next month, and maybe make a decision at that point if we.
I second that, I move to table it for further review.
I'll second, okay, roll call, vote please.
Mr. Pecusa?
Yes.
Ms. Krevdott?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Montgomery?
Yes.
Mr. Masong?
Yes.
Mr. Bertoni?
Yes.
Okay, so this will be tabled, and we appreciate you guys coming in again, we'll discuss some further information hopefully next month then. Any other items or comments before we adjourn from anybody? If not, I would like to just wish everyone happy and healthy, happy and healthy holidays, and hopefully everybody gets through this cold spell that we're going through, single digits here, so, and.
I second that.
Any comments, Mr. Mintz, about Mr. Franco Harris, it's condolences to him and his family, I'm sure, so, with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I see you.
Moved. Any second?
Motion to adjourn.
And do we have a second?
Right here, second.
All right, all in favor?
Thank you.
Aye.
Any opposed? Meeting adjourned.